Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 17th, 2023 meeting of the Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission. I am Commissioner Ozzy Parenti, and with us tonight we have...
Tom Parenti.
Paul Kaplan.
Kevin Cornell.
Judy Smith.
Jack Demerian, zoning administrator.
All right. Let's get right to our agenda. First item on the agenda this evening is a review of the minutes from the October 3, 2023 meeting.
Last paragraph on page one. I think the word next wants to be November. First line, last paragraph. We have one more.
Say it again, Tom.
Last paragraph, page one, first line, next wants to be November.
Yes, good. I had that saying, first November, right? One November?
And then, under petition to amend the Orange zoning regulations, just add an "O" to petition.
Got it.
And last line of page two, similarly, I think November wants to be October.
Yes.
That's it for me.
I had just a couple of things. Three lines up from the bottom of the first page. It says, if there are matters to attend, I guess he means attend to, he will then call a special meeting for Thursday, November 9, and then, with three commission members being able to attend. I think that should say, November 9, if there is at least, or if there are at least three commission members able to attend.
When does the term of the newly elected start?
Sorry, yeah, I got it. If, if there was a new, you know...
S M A W.
Yeah, if there were, you know, one, two, whatever.
You said 10 days after they are sworn in?
It'll be 10 days following the election, there'll be the swearing-in ceremony.
So we're gonna have a meeting one day after three...
As of right now, we don't have anything on that agenda, so as of right now, I am planning on canceling the first meeting of November.
Because just mathematically...
Right, so the second meeting of November would be potentially a new slate?
Potentially a new, new members on board.
Let me try that again. I misread my own writing here. The line begins, November 9, comma, I would cross out the word "with," and add there, if at least three commission members are able to attend.
Gotcha.
Then it says applicants will be made aware in advance...
If only three...
If there is a three-member meeting.
If only a quorum is able to attend.
But I just thought it was a little confusing.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the only other thing I had, Jack, was on the second page, paragraph right in the middle of the page, it begins Attorney Timothy Lee, and the last line says, and was allowed, and I would add, as a legal non-conforming use.
As a legal non-conforming.
But Sponge Brother's car wash was pre-existing and was allowed as a legal non-conforming use.
Got it.
Other than that, that was all, that's all I had.
And I think that petting should be petitioned.
I'll make sure I get that one too. Thank you.
The big black, the big...
Tom pointed that out as well.
All right, is there anything else? No? Okay. Then a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
We have a motion.
Second.
It's been seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right, 5-0 to approve the minutes as amended. All right, next item on our agenda is old business. Do any of the commissioners have anything they'd like to bring up under that topic? All right, how about under new business, item number three? All right, moving right along. Item number four, report of the zoning enforcement officer.
Sure, short and sweet tonight. I might have mentioned last week, but that self-storage facility is gonna start pulling building permits. They were unable to get that sewer connection easement from Yale, so they will have to be on septic over there. So right now, they are working with the health department for on a septic design.
This is for...
This is at the end of Solene Lane.
Right, this is for self-storage though, right?
Correct, yeah.
So the sewage needs are gonna be...
It's minimal. The septic design is gonna be...
And Yale is unwilling to do that because they're...
I don't know if they're unwilling, or you couldn't get ahold of them, because I know the applicant was having an issue even finding a representative from Yale to have this discussion with. So I don't know if they gave up, or Yale got back to them and said they're not interested.
Not surprised, okay.
Either way, they have to get a septic system there.
Got it.
Which they did take into account in their plans in case that happened. And my last thing is the dispensary at 175 Boston Post Road, I believe is gonna be CO'd by the building department this week. They have met all of the zoning requirements outlined in their approval letter. I think they're just finishing up one or two things for the building department, but I think they're planning on opening next week. They did reach out to me and say that the first 30 days of their opening will only be medicinal. It will not be hybrid. They're waiting on a permit for the hybrid retail from the state, which typically takes somewhere around 30 days.
And when... So the thing that I was curious about is, first of all, I'm not sure the public knows that, but they were obligated as part of the application...
Yep.
For additional parking and...
90 days.
And for 90 days, right?
Correct. And they actually have an agreement for a year with Hitchcock Plaza.
Smart.
Yeah.
But they also had some public safety...
They had some site alterations that needed to be done, and I have inspected the site.
No, I think Kev's getting for the police or some other traffic control or something.
Was there any traffic control?
They had signage that they had to post saying no left turn, or, and they installed a gate at that back entrance.
Yeah.
So they had two entrances or exits onto Lindy Street. The furthest, the entrance furthest from the post road, we approved with a gate. So that has been installed.
No, I think, were you getting to some kind of traffic control, not...
You know, once they open for the hybrid product, what triggers the need? Like, you know, do we just, we're driving and we see traffic, or does the police department make the call for public safety? Like, we don't know what it's gonna look like.
If there's an issue to public health and safety, the police department would be the responding department.
Yeah.
But that reciprocal parking agreement was the commission's way of alleviating any issue that might come with that initial rush. And this, you know, only medicinal for the first 30 days will alleviate some of that too.
Don't want to get put away.
Right, because, you know, the people who don't have that medical card, you know, can't get anything there.
If they have it for a year, then we don't have to start tolling it when they open up recreation.
Well, that was, yeah, because I was thinking about that from a parking standpoint, but then I was, I thought I, maybe I misremembered, that there was, the applicant had also, had agreed to put some kind of traffic control, live person-type traffic control.
They will have security on site.
Their own staff.
Yeah, their own staff, that's what they need, just as the nature of their business.
That's part of their security plan, right?
Correct, yes, they will...
The police department.
They'll be monitoring the drive-through and parking operations, so if it does get congested for any reason, they have someone, you know, of their staff on site directing people around.
That's by, well, that's by state law, it's not even...
Right.
They need to present a security plan and sign off on it.
Right, no, for some reason, I thought for the first month or two, they were gonna be...
I think you're thinking of that reciprocal parking agreement with Hitchcock Plaza.
Yeah.
That was the only thing that they, you know, still had to do, and they've given me the contract, that's all squared away.
That's okay. Moving on, I saw a live body at Firelight today, and a couple of live bodies, actually. It seemed to be more construction. Did they get past their legal issue of access?
They did, yeah. The issue was, there was a sliver of the corner where Racebrook meets Old Tavern. You know how they have that entrance there that people like to cut through and avoid that light right there?
Not me.
Not, not you, of course not.
No one at this table.
That is being closed, and a sliver of the work that's being done there is actually within the state right-of-way. So they had to come to some sort of lease agreement with Connecticut DOT to use that small portion for their changes.
Yeah.
So they got through the traffic authority, there's no changes to the site plan that we approved, so they're hitting the ground running.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, is that it, Jack?
That's it for me.
All right, any, any questions for Jack? All right, then. Okay, then we could proceed with our public hearings at this point. We have two on our agenda. The first one is a continuation from our meeting first Tuesday of October. It's a petition to amend the Orange zoning regulations. It's been submitted by 79 BPR Orange LLC, and the purpose of the application was to amend Article 6 of the regulations, the Orange zoning regulations, to allow for car washes in the commercial C2 district. And as I mentioned, it's a continuation from the 10-3-23 meeting. Is the applicant present?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. My name is Attorney Timothy Lee. I represent the applicant, 79 BPR. Principal is Adam Sheps, he is here tonight. As the chair referenced, we were here two weeks ago, we made a presentation regarding our proposed text change to the regulation. At some point in time during the meeting, the question arose as to whether the text change was necessary for the particular use we're trying to put the property to, and we engaged in somewhat of a debate as to whether the proposed, well, we seek the text change in order to install vacuum cleaners as part of a pre-existing non-conforming car wash. So the commission began a debate as to whether the addition of the vacuums and the elimination of the Lube business would be deemed an intensification of a pre-existing use, in which case the commission would not need to amend the zoning regulations, because we'd be able to add the vacuum cleaners as a right, or whether the addition of the vacuum cleaners would be an enlargement, in which case we would continue to pursue the text change in order to allow Adam to install the vacuums. So the commission, at the conclusion of the meeting, had continued the public hearing to tonight in order to get some more clarification, and that's why we find ourselves here tonight. I know in the preceding weeks, Jack had reached out to Adam Sheps and asked Adam for a schematic site plan so that he could see what exactly Adam was planning to do on the site if he gets the relief from this commission. And as you can see from the modified, or the schematic site plan that got submitted, we are proposing to eliminate the building where the Lube business is currently located and to replace that with 12 vacuum, self-service vacuum areas for customers. I would point out, because I think it's relevant to the commission's determination, that Adam currently does do vacuuming at the site. There are five vacuum stations, those vacuums.
And has for a period of time.
And has for a long period of time. So the vacuum cleaner, vacuuming is not something that's new to the site, but we are seeking to add the self-service element and increase the number of vacuums. So with that as background, I'll leave the debate to the commission as to whether...
Sorry, I was going in circles again.
Yeah, so, I mean, and I thought about it too. It was an interesting debate that the commission had last time, and quite frankly, I wasn't aware till Adam said it, that he does have five vacuum spots at that location. So based on at least the evidence I heard from Adam last week and the cases or the memo that Jack was kind enough to forward, I really do think that this could be deemed an intensification of the pre-existing non-conforming use, which would kind of render this text change moot. If the commission felt that same way, and the zoning enforcement officer felt the same way, then certainly we'd be in a position to withdraw this application from your consideration.
And Attorney Lee, if we were to adopt your text amendment proposal, the applicant could come back in a year and propose five more bays for washing, and that would be a permitted use, correct?
Well...
If it could fit on the site.
Subject to meeting of bulk standards.
Correct.
Okay. But that would be a use by right if the text amendment were to be adopted.
That is correct.
Theory of intensification, rather than...
No, if we adopt the text amendment, it would be a permitted use on that site. Therefore, to put more car wash bays in would be...
As long as they meet the site plan standards.
Yeah, the site plan.
The proposed amendment to the regulations singles out this parcel for that use. You can't make that use of any other land in the zoning district, it won't be permitted. But that doesn't stop this applicant, or any successor in interest. I mean, he may say, well, I don't intend to put any addition to the car wash, but that doesn't mean the guy he sells the business to a year from now won't do it. So the only, you know, when, when they, somebody comes back at some point in time with the interested in expanding the car wash use, that would be a permitted use. We'd have no control over that. And the only thing, the only thing that would limit their rights is the bulk standards.
Right.
The setbacks.
As opposed to, if we don't change it, it's still, it's still, you know...
Prohibited use.
Yes, a legal non-conforming.
It's prohibited in that zone and their use. Well, I would take the position that it's, even with the enhancements they described, I think it's a legal, you know, non-conforming use.
But did you say if you deem it an intensification, they'll just withdraw the text change?
Yes, that's what they said.
Attorney Lee, I think you're right. We are gonna kick the ball around.
Tim's so smart.
Yeah. Well, but I would like to thank, you know, Jack for putting together, and I guess Attorney Marino, putting together some of the case law to help us, to guide us on what's going on here, because, you know, you know, it's very interesting how this is an often discussed gray area.
Yep.
Okay? But these, what they call their ZAC factors, you know, seem to fall squarely on point here, where we have a business that was, you know, an existing non-conforming use, engaged in this, and, you know, in fact, the quote is, you know, for the benefit of the people in the audience, was that if a, if a baby, if the housing of a baby elephant was allowed, you can't evict the animal when it's grown up. So, you know, now that the evolution of car washes needs nine vacuum stations instead of five, seems to fall squarely in these, these three points. One, the extent to which the current use reflects the nature and purpose of the original use. Seems like a checkmark.
Especially in light of the fact that they've done vacuuming since the inception.
Any differences in the character, nature, and kind of use involved? You know, the cars have more cylinders and don't use leaded gas, you know, it's like, any substantial difference in effect upon the neighborhood resulting from the differences in the activities conducted on the property? So, you know...
The one that struck a chord with me was A9. If you can convert a beauty salon to a real estate office, why couldn't you convert service bays to vacuums when you already have them operating?
Yeah, so, you know, to me, it just, it seems that, you know, in the natural evolution, this falls into the test, and our original, just intuitive feel that less, less non-conforming things were gonna be happening after than before...
Is it reasonable?
It was, you know, plus, as Judy pointed out, if we go the text change, you know, this may be the only place in town, but it doesn't mean it's gonna stay at this level of intensity. So I think we could easily find that this is not an expansion of an existing non-conforming... Wait, what is the correct language?
Intensification.
This is intensification, not expansion.
That is our finding, and they would withdraw their text amendment proposal.
Let's do this, let's close the public hearing if, if...
I mean, if the commission is comfortable in giving direction to the zoning administrator, and the zoning administrator is comfortable getting that direction, if you want to give the direction to him right now, then I would be in a position to withdraw the application.
Ozzy, the nuance here is what you have before...
I'm sorry, I can't bring it up. Could you come up with a point?
Yes.
Vincent Marino, the town attorney? I just want to remind the commission that what's before you is an application to amend the text amendment, not a question as to whether or not this is an intensification, or that was just a collateral conversation. And I don't know if it would necessarily, necessarily be proper for you to be making findings about something that's not actually before you. What is before you is an application to amend your, your text.
Yeah, I thought...
Right? And, you know, I think...
How do we satisfy the applicant?
I think you've heard the conversation, and he can receive instruction from that conversation, but I don't think you should be making any findings on something that is not before you.
Well, that's true.
Just, just a...
There's no, at some point...
A question to pause.
Yeah, no, but what I thought you were gonna say is, you know, do we need to make a decision on the application, or can it be withdrawn?
Well, he could withdraw, it's his application, he could withdraw it. If he doesn't, because he wants a determination that this is an intensification, I don't think that that's properly before you.
I think he's gonna get that when he comes in with a site plan.
I think I have a certain comfort level at this point in time.
Sure.
That I think we'd be in a position...
Otherwise, you can hold Kaplan hostage.
I don't want...
They trade me away in a second.
So like I said, we appreciate the time the commission spent on this application. It actually was an interesting debate, and we thank the work that Jack did. At this point in time, we have a certain comfort level regarding our future use of the property, and we would like to withdraw the application from the commission's consideration.
I would just add one thing, though. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the applicant's plan is to demolish what amounts to a full one-third of the building there, right?
Correct, yes.
And that build, you know, that one-third of the building is used for, is a non-conforming use. It's, you know, motor vehicle repair. So I mean, clearly, you know, we're diminishing the non-conformity as it relates to motor vehicle, as opposed to the car wash, you know, so. You know, that ought to go in the record. Yeah, I want that in the record, and, you know, again, everything Kevin...
I don't know if there's gonna be a record, so to speak, or...
Well, there is.
Are you coming in with a site plan application?
Well, I guess that's the...
The next step would be for them to come in with a site plan app.
Because if that be the case, then I think that is at the time you'll make that plan.
No, definitely.
But the, I mean, the site plan app won't go in front of the board. But after this discussion, I am fully capable of making that determination that this is an intensification. I'm more than willing to do that, so that's on my...
Well, you, on occasion, on things that you...
It could be.
You exercise your discretion to bring it before the commission.
If the commission, I mean, I think the level of alteration here itself is not that major, I would have no problem signing off on the work itself. If the commission would like to have that site plan presented to them at the next regularly scheduled meeting, I'd be happy to do that upon the commission's, you know, request, if they think that that's necessary.
The site plan already exists?
I think that is, is that the site plan right now.
Still a draft, yeah.
It would need to be.
But I'm sure what I would be reviewing would look something like this. So if the commission thinks that when I do get that application, that they would feel more comfortable looking at it, even though there's no public hearing, then that's totally fine, we've done that before.
If there's no change in traffic pattern, ingress, egress, bulk standards...
Which, judging by this draft, there is not.
In that part of the building is coming down, I don't see a problem.
But if, but if they were, you know, changing the traffic flow, yes, I would like to see that.
So when, when that does get formally submitted to my office, we can...
But those will, that'll go to site plan considerations, it won't go to use considerations.
Correct.
It'll just be bulk.
Right, because we're saying the intended use is a legal non-conforming use.
So did we close the public hearing?
Well, I withdrew the application.
So it doesn't exist.
We don't have to close it, right? I don't think we do.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. All right. Are we, so we're clear on...
It won't be different, yeah.
I'm not gonna bring it up.
Yeah, so we are clear on that. The only thing I'm just now realizing is I didn't put the legal notice for the next item in your packets. I have confirmation that it appeared, and I can read it off right here when everyone's ready.
All right.
So we didn't need those minutes from 1998 that I dug up?
I just want to say that, to echo what Kev said, I don't know if you intended the stuff that you gave to us to help you, or to support your position, or to support the, some of the board's position.
I enjoyed reading you too, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, but it was terrific, and I thank Vinny at the same time.
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, then.
Yes, I, my apologies, I forgot to give you guys copies of this legal notice, so I will read it now. To appear one time on Wednesday, October 4, 2023, and one time on Wednesday, October 11, 2023. Notice is hereby given that on Tuesday, October 17, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. at the Orange Town Hall, 617 Orange Center Road, the Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission will conduct a public hearing on the following. Application for the conversion of a single-family dwelling to accommodate an elderly apartment, submitted by Franken and Taralotto for property known as 17 Wellington Drive, to construct in addition to accommodate an in-law apartment. A copy of this notice has been filed with the Orange Town Clerk. Additional information is on file at the Orange Zoning Department, dated in Orange CT this third day of October 2023.
All right, thank you, Jack. So this, this is item number six on our agenda. Is the applicant present? If you could just introduce yourself for the, for the court reporter.
Frank Taralotto, 17 Wellington Drive, Orange. You're welcome. So I'll just, the application is to add an in-law elderly apartment to our current property, which is at 17 Wellington Drive. I see you have the site plan or the survey in front of you. Basically, it's an 842-square-foot addition that would be attached to the east side of the property, which is currently the driveway. Be a two-car garage with the 842-foot unit above that. The egress and ingress is strictly through the current front door, so there's no additional front door on the property. It's gonna be on top of a two-car garage, so we'll have an extension of our current garage. It's one bedroom, one kitchen, living room, and then a bathroom. We went through the three approval cycles, if you will, with Brian the Sanitarian. We need to add approximately 32 feet of leaching field, and I believe you have the preliminary design there. We have the preliminary design from the architect, just to show the kind of schematic from the front, back, and side. The residents will be 55 or older, which is my wife and I. I think I hit all the points. If I didn't, I apologize, and you guys can ask questions, but I look forward to the approval of...
So again, who's occupying the dwelling you're creating?
Dwelling we are creating, at some point will be occupied by Anna and myself, but it'd be my daughter who'd be occupying it at this time.
Oh, I see, okay.
We'll be living in the current unit, current dwelling. Reason, as I just put a bullet in here, the property values to stay in Orange for a young couple is through the roof, and we want to stay in Orange and stick with the schools, and this is the only affordable way that we see it, because we have the property, there's plenty of room, and we believe it meets all the criteria, so.
Yeah, I don't, usually the application comes to us, and the apartment being created is used by the elderly.
But the language supports the other way around.
Yeah, it says at least one dwelling unit shall be occupied by a person 55 years of age or older, so I don't.
Does not specify whether it's the one being created or existing.
And, and the one being created has to be less than 900 square feet, which it is.
64, yeah.
So I don't see any, I don't see any issues with that, just different than we've seen before.
Right, sort of the reverse, right.
And the lot is, has a minimum area of 30,000 square feet, and this one is.
38.5.
38.5.
I have a broader conceptual issue, which is, since when did 55 become elderly? Like, that just doesn't feel right.
We can change that.
Yeah, down the road, under new business, we're going to come up with another term.
Judy, this is no time to become embittered.
It just doesn't matter to me anymore.
Those pesky feds.
And the, there's no issue with the access and egress that is not changing from the front of the dwelling as well?
And the, the, both dwelling units shall be attached by a common wall. Floor ceiling, not simply by an attached breezeway or porch, which is, appears to be the case.
Right. There's not an additional entryway on the front facade.
And it otherwise meets the bulk standards.
Correct. They'll have to come in with a zoning compliance application to get sign-off from the Health Department, myself, and the town engineer. So you guys, again, are approving the in-law setup as a use. The physical addition will come after, pending an approval tonight.
And you do realize, sir, there's some paperwork aspect of this on a yearly basis also?
Meaning every year?
Every year.
Got to sign the affidavit.
The same affidavit that he signed.
I signed it, yes.
With this application, right? Okay. Anything else?
That's it, all set.
All right. Do we, do we have any comment from the public? I see the public, the only people in the public at this point are the applicant.
You want to oppose, object?
You don't want to object, make it interesting?
No.
All right. All right, then. Is there, thank you, I think we're all set.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Is there any information we need from outside?
I have not, I have not received any input from residents, so I don't have anything else.
And we don't need any sign-offs?
Not at this point, no, that, like I said, that'll come, come as their next step.
All right, so is there any reason why we can't close the public hearing on the matter?
Move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. I don't see any problem with the application. I think it's, you know, it meets all the requirements of 383-140, the special standards for conversion of a single-family dwelling to accommodate elderly housing, and, you know, it, it has to be approved in accordance with Article 14, which are our special-use permit standards. And, you know, one thing that comes to mind, and this is in our Plan of Conservation and Development, this is, you know, we're hopeful of getting applications like this frequently, because it's, you know, it meets a housing need.
Well, after the older population.
Right.
The elderly population.
It spans the housing portfolio.
That's what I was trying to.
Absolutely.
So that's, that's, you know, a vital public interest, and something we consider under special-use permits. I don't, I don't see it as a, you know, a traffic generator, or, you know, and it produces noise or a nuisance, or.
Negative impact on the neighborhood.
Yeah, it's not disharmonious with the neighborhood. So, you know, I think with all those things in mind, I'd be in favor of approving.
Want a motion?
Unless anybody's got any further comment? Okay, yes.
A move that we approve the application for conversion of a single-family dwelling to accommodate an elderly apartment submitted by Franken and Ann Taralletto for the property known as 17 Wellington Drive. It certainly meets all the criteria of Orange that you just articulated, and it fills the need that we talked about from the Plan of Conservation and Development for additional housing for that part of the population.
All right, we have a motion to approve the application. Do we have a second?
I will second the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, very good. Congratulations, good luck with the project.
I'll be reaching out in the next couple days.
All right.
Now, I believe we have to formally vote.
Formally vote on.
We do have to vote to go into executive session.
Yeah, all right, let me, let me, let me just. All right, the last item on our agenda is executive session, and the, this is in connection with litigation pending on our, with respect to the commission's decision on 88 Marsh Hill Road. So we're going to, after, you know, upon motion made, seconded, and approved, we'll go into executive session. I will not accompany the rest of the commissioners, because I have a conflict on this matter. So I'll just stay out here by myself while you enjoy the conversation. But, but the town attorney will meet in executive session, so. We need a motion.
We, we do need a motion and a second, and a positive vote to go into executive session, then we'll clear the room and go from there.
All right, a move that we go into executive session.
Second, all right. It's been seconded, all those in favor? Aye.
Okay.
All right. Do you have to make the mo?
Yeah, well, Judy's.
I guess I will entertain a motion to.
Just want to know we're on here.
Yep, I'm making a motion, I'm asking for a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the commission is now full with the leadership of Ozzy Parenti.
Thank you very much.
Thank God.
Well, the only, the only item we have left on our agenda is to adjourn, so.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, it's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.